About twenty seconds and we'll start. All right, Tom, are you ready? This is a regular meeting of the June sixteenth meeting for the Eastern City Commission. I've asked Tom to do the pledge and I'll do the prayer. Let us pray, please. Father, we thank you for this day and this time together. We thank you for our community and for everything that's going on with all the positive things that are happening. We pray to continue to guide us and direct us in the decisions that we make. We'll continue to help this community to be a place that we want to live and work and play. Father, we are blessed in so many ways. We thank you for the health that we enjoy that we can be here. Pray to continue to watch over us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. Public comment, I don't know if you have a public comment. Approve the minutes of the May nineteenth meeting.
Second.
Motion from Charlie and a second from Richard to approve the May nineteenth meeting. Any other discussion? Pardon say aye.
Aye aye.
On opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Board of City Commission, would you like to take action on the following agenda items? Item number one, discussion consideration of a request by Ranger at Cisco College for hotel motel tax event funds for sponsorship of the sixth annual Ranger Ranger Roundup and volleyball tournament.
Larry, you skipped number five.
Oh, financial Leslie, I'm so sorry. There wasn't a line spaced in there, so the spacing messed me up. It doesn't take long. Financial report, if you've got a copy of the May... We really need to brag on that because she got it here in a timely fashion.
Yes.
Finally got some help and that helped ya. We won't go into what happened to you today. We know that she was up there doing all the heavy lifting. Thank y'all both.
Did anybody else not get a copy of the April financials? Do you need to send them to anybody else?
I got an email of it.
Yeah, I did an email because it was after the meeting last night.
I got it. Anybody need a physical copy?
I'll take a look again and if not, I'll ask you to send it.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. And I'd like to introduce Lindsay to everybody.
Okay.
This is Lindsay Ward. She has been hired to be my replacement when I retire. And so we're... We're working hard to get things done. I'm kind of working towards having her do the work and me do the catch-ups. Because by the time I'm gone, we want everything caught up and running smoothly and so she can get off to a good start.
Well, I know the budget process is coming at us. How's the audit? Where are we in the audit?
I'm not ready yet.
Are they waiting on us or is that...
They're waiting on me right now. Yeah, they're waiting on us right now. I'd love to tell you sometime what my problem is.
But that's coming down the pipe?
Yes, that will be done, yes. And then we'll have another one again before the end of the year. So we're gonna get high behind here. Today is... Six months from today I retire.
Six months from today.
You're not counting though, are you?
I'm sorry?
It's still in December.
Yes.
How many hours, minutes?
Let me look.
Next month it'll be November. Next meeting it'll be October.
Well, and see, that's the other interesting thing is it's six months from today. But today I am sixty-six and eight months old. So I'm eligible for my full social security now.
We need to retract that statement. Good, congratulations, that's good.
So I'm told and I'm tickled to have Lindsay and she's already catching on. We're... This repetition that we're being able to have with me being here is really helping get her training quicker. And there's just a lot, there's just a lot to it. So I want to thank Savannah for, and Larry or whoever else had anything to do with getting somebody on board this early so we can work together.
Well, you didn't get it, appreciate it. Thank you for the time and reports we've gotten now. Does anybody have any questions? The sales tax looks good. The trend lines are just amazing. I don't know how that works so well, but it does. We spend in a consistent fashion, I guess. Any questions on the financial package?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Sorry I skipped number five. Board of City Commission, may you discuss and take action on the following agenda items? Number one, discussion consideration of request by Ranger at Cisco College. We need hotel motel tax funds for sponsorship of the sixth annual Ranger Roundup volleyball tournament. Before we do that, I want to do something just to make everybody aware, because this question has come up. And I've made a copy of this so everybody would know. This is hotel motel money. The Lions Club request that we're fixing to have is hotel motel money. The pickleball question on here that we're gonna talk about is hotel motel money. Now, what does that mean? Hotel motel money is... This is the official tax code document three fifty-one dot one oh one, use of tax revenue. Subject to section three fifty-one dot one zero seven six. Promotion of tourism by the enhancement and upgrading of existing sports facilities or fields if the municipality owns the facility or the field. And that's where the pickleball court, that's where the... Whatever worked for the baseball field, the things we're trying to make improvements in there, is all hotel motel money that can only be used for that. The other piece of that pie that's in here is about anything that puts heads in the beds. And that means that you have a tournament. Cisco and Ranger have this sixth annual tournament coming up that we're on the table at the time. Is using hotel motel money because it brings people to town. And when you look at the list of all the different towns and how far around they are, it's obvious they've got to stay in a hotel motel. And that's what that's all about and that's what that's for. Just to get that on record and everybody knows what we're talking about. This is hotel motel money. I wish we could use it for streets and for fire trucks and new police vehicles and pay everybody what they're worth. Not for that. It is for putting heads in the beds and improving people, facilities and things to bring people to town. Okay, I said it now. This yours, okay.
Nicole said Ranger College volleyball. This isn't updated. The tournament actually... It actually is growing. We upped it to ten from nine last year. We have four... And on the second sheet, the second sheet has the teams that are coming in our bracket. We have three teams coming from Kansas. We have... There's eight teams total that will be staying in the hotels. There are two coming from Dallas that will only come for one evening. The rest of... So six of the eight will be staying for two to three nights. We're actually playing Blinn College on the Thursday leading up into the tournament. They should be a top five. We won't have our rankings out until August. But they should be a top five national program. We have Eastfield College, which is coming. And if you guys get an opportunity, that team is sixty-nine and one in the past two years. I just went to camp with their coach and I'm good friends with him, so I know really well. He's a back-to-back national champion. So we're pretty excited about the tournament, bringing the teams that we're bringing into it. You know, we... I handled this aspect of it. The Cisco College coach will have the list of restaurants and stuff and it'll be Cisco, Eastland and Ranger, which we don't really have. We have the Dairy Queen and one other restaurant. But so most of the teams, obviously, they either... Pretty much everyone stays at the Best West room and a few do stay at the La Quinta. But we're super excited about the sixth year of hosting this. When I started this tournament, it was with Coach Susan Moore at Cisco College. And we wanted to put, you know, a lot of people look down at us being two junior colleges within twenty miles. And I would say like we keep growing our tournament. We capped it at ten just to make sure that we have the adequate beds for them to be in. Again, overflow could probably go to the Eastland historic hotel. We just want to make sure that we run a good tournament and teams want to come back to it. So we're excited and it's gonna be here in no time.
Okay. Any questions?
And our officials did go up this year, so that if you compare to the old... It's mandated that our officials are more expensive, like probably everything else nowadays.
So are you asking for any funding from Cisco or Ranger?
Yes, ma'am, we will. We...
And you're asking how much for it from us?
Actually, whatever you can give us, we'll take whatever. We would be happy with anything just to help with the expenses. Since most of the teams, like I said, they all stay here.
Cisco has some. They don't have any plus to stay?
Yep, they want them here. As we've run around and kind of looked at our... These are the best hotels. When you compare us to other cities that host, like the La Quinta and the Best West room are the best two hotels.
You've got a hospitality room down here, that's for the coaches and stuff.
Yes, sir.
I understand that. You've got a food and drink snack bar.
The bus drivers as... As bus drivers as well.
Okay, do you generate any revenue? Do y'all charge admission? Does this all come in free? Do y'all work out a concession?
That's debatable between the athletic directors at Cisco and Ranger right now. We would like to charge, they don't want to charge, so we're not sure. That's a question at this time of point.
If you charged and you got your way, what would you use that money for?
Hope offset the expenses.
Is this all the expense? So if we pay all of this, you don't have to charge?
Correct.
All right, any other questions?
I moved... Two years ago, we had a...
We don't have the amount that we're asking for?
They're asking for eight thousand.
For the full amount?
They had that over here on this one, but they didn't do the form exactly. And the difference in the increase in prices is the cost of referees?
Yes, sir.
Have we covered the full amount last year, please?
Yes, we did. We've done it the last several years now. I mean, we've done it the last several years.
Two years ago, they used our facility down here to get air conditioning on the bus. It's one of those, it's like eighteen... I know it's about a twenty-four passenger, but it was one of those nice little bus type.
Might be able to, sorry.
I'll make mention to approve the request by Ranger at Cisco College for the hotel motel tax event funds for sponsorship of the sixth annual Ranger Roundup and volleyball tournament in the amount of eight thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
I second it.
And motion from Tom and a second from Richard to approve the entire project for eight thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Big and good luck.
Please come watch us.
Because you get in free.
What was the name of the town that you said is...
Eastfield. Eastfield. Eastfield, uh-huh. Eastfield College, they're out of Dallas Fort Fort. They're a Division III junior college program. They beat a lot of us Division One. They don't have... They actually do not have athletic scholarships and they're fun to watch.
Wow.
But the Blinn College will be, they're always top ten as well, so we're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, can you kind of possibly bring into...
Okay. Number two. Discussion consideration of the East and Lions Club requesting funds to help with the matching grant for a new playground equipment at the city park. Dean, are you doing that one?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, I hear you. Fire. All right. I'm Dean Verden, president of East and Lions Club. And the pavilion, and I believe it's gonna be, you know, y'all unaware of the pavilion, you've been up there and seen it all. I believe this weekend is homecoming for the city. I think some of the classes are gonna use that pavilion, so it has been used. I've heard there's already been a family reunion and I believe other people are gonna come in with family reunions. This maybe will fill up your motels and help up these other programs and help. I didn't know where our money was coming from, so that's great. So we'll see what we can do to put some people in La Quinta. Now, all of any of you get on Facebook. But lately, they've been showing a lot of toys we grew up with. You probably didn't, but anyway. The merry-go-rounds, I love those merry-go-rounds. You'd get on there and you'd spin it as fast as you could. See how long the last one on there was a winner. Those metal slides, they were hot. Remember the drive-in? We had metal slides and swings and merry-go-rounds and all that. But what was really fun was wax paper. You put wax paper on that slide and pshh. You go and see how far you'd go off that slide. And like Richard said, sometimes you make a butt puddle and sometimes that butt puddle turned into concrete.
Yeah.
Anyway. I've got all my limbs. I don't... Did you ever break anything? You broke something all the time. Did you ever break anything on one?
I broke them both with a finger when I was playing.
Okay, I wasn't doing that stuff. But and the swings, you know, you swing as high as you could. Like Julie's other ball go, you try to get that leg to come up. Anyway. Now, we're asking for money to help... I'm gonna call it sissy stuff. But because some little kid got hurt and he didn't walk at all. He cried to his mama and the cure chrome didn't help. So we're asking money to put in this playground equipment. And it will be Rose out here, Terry Rose, be the one doing that. And this is just an option. There's some other stuff we're looking at too. But we're looking at seventy-five thousand is what I was told. And I put on there, it's gonna be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of stuff, because that's what I was told. Anyway, we got a matching grant we're looking for and this will come from Texas Park and Recreation. So with y'all's help, we're gonna put some nice new colorful plastic stuff up there. That's suitable where the kids won't get burned. It will be covered for the heat. But more use of the pavilion, more use of the park. You know, we've got some small... I kind of looked yesterday, I went up there. We've got some little tube thing, little plastic stuff. This is gonna be a whole lot bigger. And it's for really all ages, that's one thing. Not sure what she showed on there, but if we get enough money, we're gonna have different toys for smaller kids up. Each age group, there'll be something to play on. But if it's anything like my son, he was growing up, he got on top of a swing set and crawled around. His mom and the grandma all like they were crazy. And of course, I hated him to help do more of it. But anyway, this is gonna be stuff the kids are gonna fly them on and have a blast. So that's why we're asking help to do this. I believe we have to have it turned in by August the first. Savannah, isn't that right, August the first? Yeah, but we have to have it turned in this year. So that's what we're asking for, matching grants to help us do all that.
Okay. My question.
Okay.
And I've already talked to Dean, called him and said, okay, let's get this straight.
Yeah.
You say it's actually a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. You just rounded it up to a hundred and...
I rounded it up to a hundred and said, because that's what Nikita told me. She's supposed to be here.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Yeah.
Your grant's a hundred and fifty, so what's that other eighteen thousand or twenty thousand for?
Uh-huh.
You don't have a clue.
What that... Somewhere, some of the stuff, Nikita's been handling this. She's my right hand, left hand, everything. So she's the one that came up with this. So somewhere in her figures, she's looking at bigger toys, more toys. And so that's reading, I rounded it up to a hundred and seventy initially. We were looking at a hundred and fifty. But I know now, that's what Nikita's asking for. And I'm sorry, I don't know more than that.
That's okay. Then my suggestion, one of the things, look at the hundred and sixty-eight. I think we stick with a hundred and fifty and go... Savannah, I talked about doing a hundred and sixty-eight, paying the difference and helping with that. But I think we stick with a hundred and fifty and let y'all come back with a more clear plan.
Yeah, yeah.
What you're trying to do, the next phase, if you will. What you're trying to do.
Yeah.
And do that. I think we're willing to try, hey, that's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Really enhancing the park, something we've needed a long time. And that would be my thought. That's just my two cents, what y'all want to do. How do you want us to play it out? But I think we need to get this done so y'all can be prepared for August. The next step would be, done every day, all of a sudden.
Right.
Another thing I want to bring up about the park, okay, Dean? That we can do more at the park with a bigger grant if we have a master plan at the park, is what you told me. And it's a big grant. We would have to match, but we're matching hotel motel money in a couple of years and we could hopefully save up and be able to get ready for that. But it's a plan where we can improve not just this stuff, but the entire park and things that need to be, we're swimming pools, building, whatever.
Restrooms? Or is that not... That's not... Restrooms?
That is a... Other personal conversation, Savannah and I, we're not going any farther. We're talking maybe two years down the road. It's not something... And we'll learn more from y'all with what you're trying to do here at Lions Club and we appreciate that. But there is a master plan that we need to put together. For what else do we do for the park? What else there happen? Parking, whatever we need to do and get that master plan. And like the public knows, there's something bigger could become. But this one, I'd say twenty-five thousand, unless the commission wants to do something different. Match that twenty-five thousand, you've got a... Somebody's gonna give twenty-five thousand, you've got to raise twenty-five thousand. That's how you get to the seventy-five thousand.
So it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total and you're trying to match seventy-five thousand?
Savannah did not write them.
Grant seventy-five thousand and they got seventy-five thousand, makes it a hundred and fifty.
When do you find out on the grant? If it's approved or not?
August the first.
August the first is the deadline.
It will be going through Savannah to submit it.
To submit it.
To submit it, yeah.
Then it'll be later before we're in the air.
Yeah, but in order to apply, we have to have the seventy-five...
We have to have the money in the bank, I guess you'd say. Have to have the money in the bank. Now, if we... Once I've talked to Nikita, if she's got the idea for the other, say, twenty thousand, can we come back? Or is this gonna be till next year?
You can come back.
Okay. I'll talk to her, hope tomorrow then.
I learned on the school board, know his answer to.
Well, I ain't answering nobody on the school.
Yes, that's my point. Y'all get the rest of the plan together and come back. Whether it's next month or August, September, whenever, as you move forward. If you get this grant, get it approved, then you probably can get it done till next year. I don't know what the turnaround for getting it done is, but anyway.
Have you ever worked one of these? You know what the turnaround, anybody? You know what the turnaround is?
So we need twenty-five thousand.
Three or four months, five months. They've got police cars and grants and grants.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't figure it out. Got too many... Too many pictures, sorry.
So we need twenty...
But I look forward to it. I just, you know, and with a little bit of research, we found out the Lions Club and Rotary Club started all this stuff on Park Hill a hundred years ago. So that Park Hill's been around a long time. Of course, that was a big tour stop.
Little thing to motion.
Thank y'all.
I move that we...
Thank you, Dean.
That we have pledged the twenty-five thousand dollars to the Lions Club for the grant.
Motion from Richard for the twenty-five thousand dollars to help with the matching grant.
I'll second.
I'll second from Tom. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dean, good luck.
Appreciate it.
Item number four, discussion consideration, second reading of order twenty-five dash nine one eight. Skip, I did mark number three, I'm sorry. Discussion consideration to begin the process of building a pickleball court at the city park. I'll mark them and then skip another one, lost my mind. This is another, you've got a copy of, and you don't have the two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. You have in your packet the initial for two courts. And I don't, I have not had a breakdown. We can build two courts for a hundred and six. We can build four courts for two hundred and twenty-two. Let's build two courts twice is two hundred and twelve. I can save ten thousand dollars. But we will get to that. I'm sure prices are going up and this may have caused us some change in things. These courts, if we do it, are between the swimming pool and the tower and just east of this playground and the pavilion is built. One of the things that makes this, if we can do this and want to do this, you've got adults playing pickleball while their kids are on the playset, family reunion, going on and on. This again is hotel motel money. This has been discussed when J.J. Ozpik was here. Savannah came in and probably her board still has some of this information written where J.J. took notes. This is ARCA funds. We were gonna talk about this with ARCA funds. We talked about doing this with ARCA funds. We had that and that was from COVID and money the city's got from COVID. And that money got chewed up a little bit at the time and we got kind of down to the wire and Leslie said we had to buy computers at City Hall. So we do what Leslie said most of the time. But that's where, that's where all this discussion's been going on for two years about pickleball courts and how long are ARCA funds? Pickleball is growing. It's crazy, I understand. I just found out last week that Ranger is looking at building two courts. The church over there building two courts by Ranger College and they're doing that. We play, at our house, we've had, I've counted up, fifty-one or fifty-two different people play on our courts. Some of them play a lot, some of them have been there once or twice and done that and playing on it. And it's a lot of fun. It's a growing sport. It's something we can bring tournaments and stuff to our city. I know that several people have asked about it and talked about it. And it's on the table and hotel motel money can fund this as well. It's money out of our pocket, it's putting the use to people doing things. The real question, we've got to get a better bid together. We can't take these bids as they are because we've got to put them out for bids by the world and we need to... But I think the real question, of course, Savannah does a lot of work and I help her with that. What I know about pickleball courts and that game is, do we want to move forward? Are we wanting to do this for two hundred thousand dollars, give or take, whatever, a little bit, it might be different. Do we want to move forward?
Can you say again why you're looking at four rather than two?
Just because we've got the space for it and I think if we build... I'd have to get him to go back and break these down. I don't know why, but I've got to believe building four is cheaper than building two. You build them today, it costs X amount. You wait two years and build it again, now you got X plus the increased cost from two years. We know how that's going up on other things.
You think there's a need for more?
For everybody we see, we have people asking it'd be a place for people to go play and start getting into it more than they've got a place to play. I think the more people, it may surprise us. I mean, I don't know, but it's going on everywhere. It's an amazing sport, it's a lot of fun to be able to play it and go from there. But that's what... That's where...
Are these just open courts that would be up there for anybody to use at any time?
Kind of like tennis courts, yeah. It's like our tennis courts down at school.
Tennis courts.
You have the fence around it for help with the wind. You know, here we have, can't have wind. There'll be lighting. One of the things we will talk about is we now have a curfew at ten o'clock on the hill. I've already asked Keith Pitts about it. I don't know where that ten o'clock curfew came from. It's been there a long time. I would recommend we change that to eleven. If that doesn't cause any problems with people living around, then we'll put timers on the lights. Whatever lights we put in, we'll have timers, they go off at eleven oh five. Give people time to get off the hill. But we don't want the lights in there burning all night for no reason and invite people in two o'clock in the morning to come over and try to play pickleball. Eleven o'clock, we control that and they go off and that's done. There'll be some things to help people. I sent a sign, one of the courts we were on up in the Metroplex, sent her a sign with some of their rules just to get ideas about how you play. We even played at one facility by my daughter's house in Flyer Mound. And these... And they had, they had six tennis courts and they turned those into twelve pickleball courts. And this half is for the, I'll say, team stuff, league stuff, whatever they had going on. All these people, you could tell it was organized. These six courts, you just push the paddle on the fifth and when it comes to your turn, you go play. You may be playing some of us, in fact, we did, played against them, got it pretty good. But that's just how you do it. You may be playing some of us, in fact, we did. Played against them guys a few years. But that's, that's just how you do it. We would have that same type of deal, probably mark one of the courts for beginners. Because it can be a pretty vast difference in someone that can play and someone that hadn't never played before. And do it as you get better. You can move into other courts and, and that type of thing. Today, I'll tell you unofficially now, it'll be open. People go up there and play. First come, first served and go play. If someone wanted to reserve it for something, we can reserve a court. Here's your, you're having a birthday party or doing something like that, you can reserve it. That, that's all to come. The first step is that we want to get into this and get actual real bids, draw up the plans, what we need, what we want to do, what's it going to look like and go. It won't be a lot of dirt excavation because there used to be tennis courts sitting there. So it's flat and ready to go between the swimming pool and the water tower.
Will they be covered?
I'm going to say no. That hadn't been discussed, but that's.
Well, I would ask.
Yeah, it would be a good idea, but.
I think you're going to spend.
The ones in Weatherford are covered, as I understand, I'm not going to see those.
Once you're going to put up the fence because of the winds, you need to cover it because of the heat or the sun.
I don't disagree. I'd have to know what Weatherford is like. You'd also trap the heat inside that and see, see how that goes. I don't know. I've never seen a covered tennis court in a tennis court of a venue outdoor. So I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know.
Larry, a moment ago, you talked about possible grants as it relates to a master plan. We built it out for the park and all that. Could this not fall under that?
It could. It could.
And this one oh five nine eighty-eight, that's for two courts.
That's for two.
One bid.
That was back in, that was back in April.
Yeah, that was back in April. That was back in April. This is now. But I, I went there and said, what did it cost to do four? And what is that price? I was, I, I don't like it not being broken down into what we're doing so you can compare apples to oranges. And I think when we actually draw up what we want to do and get a turnkey type thing, what's it going to cost? We need to break down so we can compare what people are doing.
Get some more bids.
Get more, oh, we've got to have more bids. What I have is these three.
They could have turnstile washers. That, that way it can't go into anything else.
We need to have a serious discussion on what it's going to look like and what we're going to do. Draw that up. I haven't paid attention, a lot of attention to the size he made this. I don't know how big a pickleball court is supposed to be and what you need, but I haven't looked into what he's done to this. I'm just trying to get us numbers, get us an idea that we want to move forward. Give a thumbs up. Let's move forward and see what this is.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with exploring this as a, as a possibility with more up-to-date quotes and a more breakdown as to what it's going to be before we commit to a fixed number that may not be current.
Well, we can't, no, I, I just, I'm going to spitball it at two hundred thousand, but where we end up, I don't know. Just give us an idea. Again, it's hotel motel money and, and we can, we can move forward with it, but I, y'all, if that's a, a motion to move forward and explore and get bids and see what it takes, get a plan, see what it takes, then that's what we need. So Tom, I made a motion. Richard, debate is second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Close at the same time. Motion carries. Thank you. Roll number one number one. Just kidding. Number four. Discuss consideration, second reading of order twenty-five nine one eight. An ordinance of the city of Easton, Texas, changing the zoning use designation of property described as lot thirteen of the north half of lot eleven, block thirty-six, Daughtry's Edition, city of Easton, Eastern County, Texas, from local business district C, C one to single-family residence district SF, amending the zoning district map for the city of Easton and to reflect such change in adopting a zoning district map, so amended. Y'all remember this property on Daughtry Street right next to the doctor, Dr. Johnson? Entertained motion. This is second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash nine one eight, changing the zoning use designation of property described at lot thirteen in the north half of lot eleven, block thirty-six, Daughtry's Edition, city of Easton, Eastern County, Texas, from local business district C one to single-family residence district SF, amending the zoning district map for the city of Easton to reflect such change in adopting the zoning district map, so amended.
Motion, Shirley. Second, Richard. Any other discussion?
Good job.
All in favor, say aye. She did. All in one breath.
All in one breath.
And with that, I'd like to ask, did you go ahead and send out letters to some of the other residential?
No, we have been working on some other items, but I have been, I have talked to about three or four of the property owners that called about this. After they got their notices, they had to call. And I asked them about if they would be interested in doing that and all of them agreed that, yeah, they would be interested in it, so.
Only not one. And she said she already thought that they were in the residential.
They all were. I was shocked that, I don't know how it ever happened again.
No, but I, but I am, I am going to move forward with sending that out with, just to, to get everybody's opinion back. And then I'll be able to present it to you guys to, to go forward with this as an en masse change if everybody's coming to it.
Got a motion from Shirley and a second of Richard to the Richard to approve order twenty-five dash nine one eight. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Close at the same time. Motion carries. Discuss consideration and status of property three zero one West Commerce and any additional items going forward.
Mary, from my, in your packet, you have photos of the three oh one West Commerce property as it was finished. The first two photos are what that lot looks like currently. It is cleaned up. They're complete with it. We, staff and I, we talked and we've kind of come up with some ideas. We're wanting to know what the commission wants to do. If this is a blank canvas right now, we don't own the property. Omar Polito still is the owner of the property, took care of the issue that was there. And we're asking if the commission wants to, if the commission wants to see the seat, to purchase this property or not. And we've listed some ideas. It's downtown. Tony went through and just did some different ideas of what this could be. You know, mural art's a big thing right now. There's food trucks. There's, if we had, you know, bathrooms downtown instead of doing porta potties during all the festivals that are had. We're just asking the commissioners, you know, for your thoughts and your ideas and if this is something that you would be interested in or not.
Are you asking if we want to purchase that?
If we want to move forward and see if that's an option with Mr. Polito.
What is the current status with Mr. Polito as far as fines and recovery of city fees and all that?
So he still has the citations that we're giving on the books. He has not pled on those yet. That'll be his next step, but he has to do. End up with a court. He can plead guilty, not guilty, and potatoes or not.
And Mr. Polito currently is waiting on me. I was waiting to make sure that everything was completed with demolition. And to, when this was kind of talked about amongst city staff, wanting to get your opinion before I got back in touch with him and told him he needed to get with the court to, to complete that part of it.
Okay, we have outstanding at the moment lawyers fees for this for how much?
At six thousand, six hundred and seven dollars.
And six, six, zero, seven. And it's fine in the citation total for what right now?
Roughly ten-four. And that's not, roughly ten thousand four hundred dollars, but not all of that is kept out of city. Unfortunately, that will be kept out of state.
How much?
I don't have the percentage off the top of my head.
Okay.
Was there any cost on behalf of the city for the demolition? Water, staffing, anything?
I see some storm sewer that needs to be repaired here.
Sidewalk, yes.
That's all storm sewer.
Does anybody go by and look at the property now that it's cleaned up?
Sidewalk. I thought storm sewer.
Okay. It's, it's, the idea the city staff has to try to use this as something, I think is much better than him ever being able to sell it. This property is actually two levels. I think they've talked about that in here, why it was built that way and what it was used for, a garage or some type of whatever. It's a split level, but it's actually a split level. The slab is not flat. And their ideas about making an outdoor mural, doing something where people could gather, take pictures in Easton. Tony, you told them about a, a place that had this and figured it's a big deal. Go to their purple wall and get a picture of whoever, whatever that one, what was that?
That was, in larger towns, there are locations that become kind of viral. There was a, a wall in Los Angeles that became known as the Pink Wall. And then people that, it became a fad and there are people that wait around the block just to go and get their picture in front of it. I think Savannah had brought up a, a black wall that was weird.
It's a green wall in Austin, the I love you so much wall. People take photos there. It's just breaking it on and it's just a.
But then there's also.
Those are type ideas to actually do something with this piece of property instead of having it just sitting there with some ugly brick walls, the two walls that are. Savannah said you can read some of the writing and you can if you look at it and repair it along it. You've got to see some of the old writings on some of the walls that are now visible because that was torn down. You can see that. That's, that's kind of what, if we can do something and paint murals to, to make it attractive. I'll tell you, as I've thought about this and trying to do, I have a little bit of a problem. It might could be done, so don't, don't misunderstand. But having like a place for restrooms and then a place for people to sit and gather next to the porta potties. I'm not sure that all fits together as a good picture, but it could be one or the other. Done right, it could work fine. We could build some kind of restroom. I don't know. I said this is down the road, but the piece of property just sitting there technically works with it and we could do something with it and make it now.
My opinion on this is I, I do not understand the city getting in the real estate business. We've got other things we can do. I think this location would be great for an entrepreneur to come in and, and do the things we've talked about. But, but not the city. We've been very blessed with this gentleman stepping up and taking care of the demolition and it saved us a lot of money. And I, I think we can hang our hat on that. But as far as purchasing real estate in the city, I'm not so sure that's, that's a good use of our money. Just my opinion.
So you're, I would say recommend that, because if your thoughts are, is we expect to find them, the lawyer fees and move on back to this?
Well, you know, the, the fees that he's accumulated so far are quite a bit, right?
Ten thousand four hundred is what he just said. Give or take. I don't want to tell you just the bottom line.
No, that's, that's current as of today.
What do you have to pay to take it down?
And I don't.
I don't know.
You can get, she told me that we can get this and depending on how.
We get that, but that paid a certain thing.
Whatever portion of that that you get and say doesn't keep and, or depending on how he pleads.
Was there any negotiation with him? If he went ahead and took care of it, that we would let the rest go away?
No.
No.
That, that's not, that's really up to the court.
Yeah, we can give an opinion to the court as far as what happens with citations, but no, we, we did not make any deal with him. These fines are what he's earned and we're not doing anything with it. That's why we wanted some of you guys to see what y'all's opinion were. If you want us to go one way or the other. It's just, we're going to follow whatever you guys tell us to do.
Were you thinking that maybe the fines would, you would say, well, y'all just take the property, something along those lines? It's plausible.
Maybe something like that to where we're not actually putting money out towards it to acquire it. But then again, as I don't know what his plans are. I haven't contacted him since this has come down. And I just wanted to know what y'all wanted us to do one way or the other before I contacted him.
But you did say the ten-four would cover the lawyer's expense.
That would be if the.
Potentially.
Yes, and then the state.
The state gets some portion. If we can't collect the lawyer fees, I'm fine with doing what, like they said, and go get our part of it, pay the bills and be done with it. Somebody will spend some money, you can sell it to them or they can do it itself. Pay section porta potty.
Hold that way.
Okay.
Public restrooms are real problems.
Did you entertain a motion?
Michael? Excuse me, do you want to make a motion?
You want to make that motion?
Make a motion that we table this and.
No, that we, what you just said, what you just said, we collect the fines and, and move on down the road.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we do collect their fines and sum of ten thousand four hundred dollars to cover our expenses on this and move forward.
I'll second.
Second, Michael. And second from Shirley. The only thing I'd like to say is that we need to put an exact amount of what they did. Do we know that is what it is? The fines are ten thousand four hundred dollars.
Well, I mean, I guess the, it would just mean to collect the fines.
Yeah. Well, he, he put in the motion ten thousand four hundred.
Yeah, I, I might say.
Put in that motion to collect the fines, whatever they may be, instead of.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's right, that was the ten-four.
You second that. All right.
I'm in that thing.
Collect the fines and second from Shirley. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Close at the same time. Motion carries. All right, man, your briefing.
Starting off, we'll start off with the streets. Last month I reported that the intersection of Moss and Daughtry was still under construction. That has since been recompleted. And the construction on Terry Street had started. They've done one lane and the holdup is, is they're trying to make sure that they can get this laid without the weather becoming an issue. That's been a lot of rain and so it's delayed things. And then the same for Pogue Avenue. Pogue Avenue, they went in and had intentions when they went through and tore up the existing pavement that they were going to be able to go through, lay rebar and pour concrete and the weather has delayed them for at least two weeks. It's just been one rain after another, which we're grateful for, but it's just a progress.
Hold on a minute. As you mentioned in the last briefing here a month ago, I believe, the Terry Street, we had a problem with water drainage and they were looking at either tearing part of that out. Has that been resolved?
Yes, they're not going to have to tear it out. They're going to end up putting in a drain to help some of that water come across. They're not going to have to tear out.
So they're forming on the right side of that street now, looking for main street. That's, so they're getting close to pouring that other.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for that.
Texas, no, no, no. Phase two of the creek resurfacing on the south port continues. That's been delayed two weeks. They were out today to start on the next section of that, so that's moving forward. Texas Water Development Board gave final approval on the contract for the main pump line. This has been a project that's been on the books since 2018. Texas Water Development Board finally approved it. A pre-construction meeting was held on June 12th. Contractors working on having delivery of materials, so that project will start hopefully by the end of June. June 30th was the day they talked about, but it could be before then, just depending on deliveries and materials coming in. The project's estimated to last 10 months. First priority is going to be on Pogue Avenue while that's tore up. And then Lago Vista will be the next because Lago Vista is the next street that we'll be working on.
Are they going to start June 30th?
If, they will start before if they can get materials in. The pipe is at the yard, but they have to have connections and everything else that they don't have yet. And sidewalks is the same as last time. I just have this on there as a reminder that repairs will begin in August, according to TexDOT. Swimming pool, we opened the season on June 7th. Prior to opening day, we did some work. We hired a contractor to come through and reinstall some tiles. They talked, they leveled and they repouted and that really made a tremendous difference. Looks really good. If you haven't been, I encourage you to go. At the end of the season, we'll be bringing a list of items that need to be addressed. So we look forward to addressing those. That way we can maintain the pool and continue that.
What is the season for the pool?
August 3rd. It's about eight weeks.
And how's the, the decision about opening up the concession stand, is that working?
It's been phenomenal. We, we, Doug likes to say, Doug is our full manager, he's in a really good job. Doug likes to say we're in the business of selling pizza. Yes, business is good and I, I think our, I mean, our first week sales were great. We've done really good. Doug? Doug?
And I'd like to add that, that, that construction, that work on the tile and the cement, whoever that was, he did a tremendous job. I mean, it's seamless.
I've heard Brian saw it, I couldn't get out and look at it.
That was Jacob Darvis, Francisco, Texas.
Oh, is it?
Francisco. Well, I was out there cleaning the pool this morning and so I got a.
Cleaned water?
Yes.
So you have to be a hard guy to this city employee.
Getting paid.
Got out of real estate and then improved.
Savannah, I have a quick question back to the sidewalk repair downtown. Are those strictly just the sidewalks on Main that, that it's TexDOT, I mean, on their street, that's their road?
Yes, at the corner of Lamar and Main where they took the tree out several years ago, by the Conley and the old annex building. And that's going to be a section that will be replaced. Yeah, several ramps to enter into the sidewalk will become ADA compliant. So there's just various little jobs around. And then there'll be a corner of Berkers that they'll be, that's sort of concrete from the trucks, they'll be fixing that. Down by the donut shop on Main, they'll be doing that. There's just several different. the donut shop on Main they'll be doing that there's just several different areas that they're fixing uh three oh one West Commerce we've talked about that a minute ago but that building's been demolished and cleaned up by the property owner and they complied within the timeframe that the commission provided and so echoing that Mr. Toledo did a great job taking care of that and getting that cleaned up um clean up along Main Street and the square continues uh they're gonna go back down Main Street this week and get that uh we need one more time before the reunion um they were around the square this week last week and I think that they have made a noticeable difference it looks really good.
Down around the square needs to go a little bit farther west of Post Mill but I did notice the six flags part which is needing.
That is on Bobby's list.
Is it?
Yes.
What about that where it's all about that tall does that been moved?
Is that the six is it the six flags yes.
Well it's not it's that it's that motel old.
Oh that next off too but yeah.
Yeah that who?
Yeah Terry's working that guy it's a gentleman that lives down in Comanche that got it I think his dad passed away and he has it the last time I had an interaction with him which was late last year he was trying to get a contractor to demo everything but uh we'd seen recently that there were stakes up like somebody had surveyed it so we don't know if it's changed hands it just had changed hands on the books yet.
It really needs to be moved for it to catch its fire.
To be a god not even chance?
I'm I'm not sure if he's getting the fines on that right now or not.
So bad.
It is bad.
That's the only I gotta check and see if that's an LLC or if that's a individual how it's cause that plays into what we can do to to panel that that's the only check on that.
What do you mean it plays into what we can do?
We can't find an LLC.
You can't find?
No sir. We found that out the hard way.
I know we might have been able to collect one I don't know if we can find one.
You can show the court over that look at.
Fine. My house has an LLC.
Well and that's a problem that you find because there's a lot of.
My wife.
There's a lot of rent houses where that's what they've done.
I didn't know that.
Yes sir.
I knew collecting's a different issue I didn't know you couldn't find them again.
I can't send them uh.
Wow.
And then not on the report um but an exciting thing to mention is Toledo's restaurant um they had a meeting with the mayor and I last week and they are anticipating opening at the end of July they have interior work that they're gonna be completing some plumbing things and some AC in the kitchen that kitchen did not have AC apparently um but they they are estimating late July so here's cross.
And if the old Toledo's has something you like and the new one doesn't have it tell them what it is and they will get it.
They will do their best to get them to.
So if there's something that they had that they don't have now they said they sure they'll do everything they can do to try to to make it like it was.
They're very excited.
Yes.
What's the timeline for Whataburger?
Whataburger uh August early August.
Early August.
They're they're actually a little bit ahead of schedule even with the weather.
Okay well if I remember right it was every through the middle of June and six weeks to get it open was the first of August and we're in the middle of June and I'm a little nervous.
Well they told me that they're a little.
It's looking good I mean they're moving pretty quick now.
Yes yeah they they're moving.
They feel pretty quick pretty good.
Yeah hey also I will say that property that you asked about is under contract it has not sold it is under contract behind the six flag part.
Okay.
Oh yeah.
Anything else?
Yes I have one other question the what is the name of the street that's going uh uh in front of Maze?
Terry.
Terry Street.
That's Terry Street.
Um it it would be nice if they'd go ahead and finish the other half of the entrance from from the highway it's pretty hard sometimes to get in it's so narrow and I know this has really affected Maze uh it's still pretty rough over there to try to get in and and it's affected their business and and this to some extent but it'd be nice if they you know they're working on that other street clear down past the USDA if they just finished that why wouldn't they finish the front?
They're of Maze?
Yes.
So from it they're waiting on elevations and stuff to make sure that everything's gonna line up from Terry Street on Main Street coming through.
Oh.
That's what mayor was asking about on if they were gonna tear any of that.
The water drain.
Yeah.
Remember the last thing that from the parking lot with the old uh tractor supply and all of that with the Whataburger truck getting that water to drain they ran into made them nervous and they we talked about tearing that part of the street what they'd already put in doing something different.
And there is water running over it right now.
Maybe what's the good example to know that they're okay now they've got to make sure they keep the rest of where the water does flow.
If they are that is on their list because Maze was notified today that they will be working in that area so they're supposed to start that back up.
You're right we.
The tank right there never went dry.
We heard a lot of that Pogue Street too.
Yeah.
It would have been fine if it had the rain we don't control the rain but boy that rain has wrecked them.
It has.
Yeah.
Remember the tank right there and it never went dry.
Any other questions for Savannah?
Thank you.
All right code compliance.
Commissioners remain started the forty five cases existing Terry opened sixty eight new cases closed thirty eight which lets us with seventy five cases open um now those uh cases open there were ninety four violations and closed fifty one violations out of the uh closed cases three junk vehicles three dangerous buildings uh twenty one citations issued majority of that is to Mr. Toledo uh for three oh one West Commerce had two uh properties reported for back taxes sixty eight annual notices sent out uh you see the fines assessed yet again and majority lion's share of that is toward Mr. Toledo.
We don't have your report in here.
Oh all right well we had ten thousand quarter and fifty seven dollars in fines assessed uh here um we did have two hundred and fifty six dollars uh in fines that had been dismissed from a case earlier in the year um two cases were uh two properties were abated by the city uh the cost of the abatement was three hundred dollars um total citations issued there were fifteen for dangerous buildings one for no utility or uh CO four for no utility account one for unlawful property nuisance uh the dangerous buildings that we've been working three oh one West Commerce has been demoed two hundred more semen the property owner um brought the property into uh compliance by securing it and everything there is the issue with the roof they there was a portion of the da- of the roof that had been damaged on that property and was hanging in a dangerous state they went in there and removed the sections that were damaged so there is a portion of that building that is open air right now uh Terry's gonna be reaching back out to them to see what they're gonna do with the remainder of that building I know it's up for sale currently.
Where is that?
Two hundred more semen it's the green uh building that uh what's the gentleman's name out of the international.
Oh yeah.
Finley?
Finley yeah.
Finley yes uh and then three oh six South semen uh the property is secured the gentleman owns that is uh supposed to be uh getting back with Terry about when they're gonna be repairing that roof because that was a section that got blown off in the storm and had been uh sitting roof was sitting on the backside of the building uh and then fourteen oh five West Commerce which is the old nursing home uh the building conditions we sent the notice to that uh property owner he is out in Carlsbad we requested a repair schedule on that the owner is currently uh getting bids on repairing the building and securing it.
Okay we got a copy of that can we get something where I make us a.
Did you mention anything about the one I'm agreeing that yellow house that that looks like the roof has had damage and it's beginning to fall on the side you know what I'm talking about?
Oh are you talking about the one that has a and there's a blue tarp on it right now used to have a tree that was kinda leaning on it?
No it's over there it's close to the car wash I believe.
Yeah I I think we're talking about the same one.
It's yellow and it's I noticed today that part of the roof looks like it's broken off and it's beginning to.
It's there was there was uh damage on that one it's the one I'm thinking of um I believe Sam Williams recently bought that there's a construction office in and he's he's gonna be fixing that yeah there was one that had been a it's somewhat same one we're talking about it's in the same area it's uh it's on the south side of the road yeah so um there was a tree that had fallen onto that and and had been sitting there for a while apparently and uh Sam got cut up and off of there and he's planning on uh fixing that and putting his uh uh construction office in there.
Okay well we're on uh police department report any other questions or tell me I'm sorry police department report.
Yes sir uh police department we uh in May we answered three hundred and ten calls for service we made thirteen arrests fifty six uh reports were generated we had a fifty seven agency assists a thousand ninety six business checks uh twenty thirteen tractor crashes four two domestic disturbances twenty two cases for five of the district attorney's office two for files given on probation we did twenty three open record requests on the traffic side of things we wrote a hundred and sixty four citations three hundred and forty five warnings for a total of five hundred and nine tractor contacts on the animal control side of things he answered a hundred and forty nine calls for service wrote zero citations four warnings thirteen dogs were impounded uh we adopted out three and we had to quarantine one we had six pretty substantial narcotics cases seven restaurants were served three DWIs we have one manufactured delivery narcotics case officer Rodriguez is gonna end up and we're gonna be seizing some proceeds from that uh so we have a pretty good one.
Any question for the police department report from Chief?
No thank you.
Good job now you're gonna do now you're gonna do the fire department report.
On the fire department side of things uh the guys answered a hundred and seventeen calls for service um eighty eight incidents in the city twenty four in the county looks like we had uh five mutual aid deals one one uh fire structure and fifty two medical assists and they worked they helped on eight vehicle crashes um we had the one building fire I'm sorry I'm I pieced this together we had a passenger vehicle two of those uh off-road heavy equipment we worked one of those we had two grass fires medical assist was at fifty two we did work one water rescue which I thought was pretty interesting we did ten lockouts um ten power lines down during the storm that the guys moved off the roads uh one unauthorized burning uh they were dispatched to ten calls that we ended up getting turned around from and the three uh weather events that we worked um on the fire department side of things um well when I stepped into that role we identified some things that needed to be taken care of so we have installed the the guys did not have computers that were working very good inside the department so I upgraded those computers and they all have access to those computers now um we've also we're also in the process of building them a computerized timesheet the guys weren't doing their own timesheets so I'm gonna have them start doing their own timesheets on the CAD side of things was the system that gives us our calls uh they had the system in the the office that wasn't working very well and only about two vehicles that the CAD was operating in so I actually asked Sheriff Wager to come in he's also the head of dispatch he came to the sheriff's department sat down and now all the CAD systems are working and all the vehicles for the guys I secured an RV uh we had some uh damage to the building that they had found out we had some bad air that the guys had been breathing and living in um situation that they were living in is not not been very uh good they pulled out carpet a long time ago the guys hadn't had carpet they'd been breathing that air and a bunch of other situations there so we're putting in a new HVAC system I've got a contractor in there supposed to give me a bid on getting that done as quickly as possible I've secured an RV for ninety days that we're gonna let the firemen sleep in outside to keep them out of that air at night I have in place a social media policy in the fire department so they will not be getting on any kind of social media or anything from this point forward uh that needed to be put in place um I mentioned earlier that the Eastern County Sheriff is also the head of dispatch coordinator for dispatch he came down and not only did he get all the the computers back up and going like it should have happened a long time ago but he had several good conversations with the firemen that were there and a bunch of the volunteers and they got to see that the sheriff is here to help them and all the other agencies in the county are here to help them it's important we start building those relationships back with our county partners and that's what I'm striving so we're gonna continue to do that there's a lot of misinformation out there right now on social media and uh we're gonna we're gonna I just wanna assure this council and assure the citizens peace and that the fire department is they're operating at one hundred percent and I am extremely proud of our firemen our firemen under a lot of stress right now the situation has been has been kinda stressful for them naturally but they have stepped up and they are they are knocking it out the park I'm proud of our firemen so uh they were gonna come in here and I was gonna introduce you to a few of them that are out working trash trash right now so but our fire department is up and running one hundred percent they're doing fine.
Fantastic.
Uh you've mentioned in your talk uh the HVAC deal and you've got a bid.
We had to come in and finish the construction work he hadn't got given it didn't give it to.
Let's define let's define for everybody's benefit what we're talking about it's not the HVAC.
The HVAC's there they've got the HVAC system there but we've gotta get the construction work not inside the building that that hadn't been done to house that HVAC system um and they we've had a contractor come in because the contractor that is gonna do the work is no longer gonna do the work and uh so we we're having to uh start from scratch on that.
Well what they did and and the idea is they try to figure out to get these air conditioning units into the right place they're building that it's on the roof technically be upstairs so they're building the bottom floor with the second floor so everybody know the HVAC the air conditioning will be up on the second floor the bottom floor they're gonna be able to use for more storage for their protective gear so on and so forth.
Yeah it's gonna have a locker room in it the system that was in place before apparently wasn't big enough and it was drawing up the fumes from the fire truck trucks and that's what was getting in all the insulation.
Return air within the open bay which is what we suck in that fuses and stuff from the fire truck into the HVAC system.
Yeah so we're getting all that too.
For for many many years.
Yeah.
It's been a long time the construction is on that building we've got the HVAC the HVAC part is done or as far as it's ready to go we've already bought it spent that money we've now gotta find money to spend to build that room to put that in to get all that done that's I just want everybody to be and you're taking bids for that now?
Yes we've got one and we're gonna see how high that bid is because of course if it goes a certain amount we're gonna have to get three bids on it so when we get that bid if it meets that threshold then I don't know I gotta go get two more.
Okay.
We'll work from there.
Any other questions from Chief Pitt?
Thank you.
Thank you very much sir who's your guest by the way?
My guest here is Detective Scott DeDey he's a detective in the police department.
Everybody may not know that I just wanna do that gonna be Ronnie I'm not gonna tell Ronnie Ronnie's always talking good about you but didn't say anything just tonight and you too I didn't thank y'all for what you do I don't get in a hard time for doing anything tonight what else we've got to even this before before uh bid by Brown the thing on the arena you got from the carbon plastics that we supported I know Michael Jay went out there and gifted it every day didn't you?
Yes sir.
Very successful as I understand Michael Jay's got a background and rode together with stuff and says really really well done did a good job so here to break down what they money on and and how it all went very positive and again putting heads in the bed hope they're most of the money are being put to work okay yeah I guess to map the tech and of course with Texas government code five five one dash zero seven four personnel matters detective said according to the local government code five five one dash seven four personnel matter discussion matters related to the employee performance including evaluation and disciplinary action uh we will go into executive session at this time it is seven oh eight.
Larry could I add something before y'all take off and we leave uh here a couple weeks ago you know I had that electrical damage in my house and I was looking for for help with that if there'd been multiple people with damages I could have gotten money in blinds clothing and I want the council and the city to know that if we have say a fire or anything where families lose furniture clothing or whatever they need help let me know and I can get monies to help these families you know we had the carbon fires I've managed to get people $1,000 had bought a lot of water a lot of clothes and all and and I think this is something that chief everybody needs to know and and maybe work with Savannah so if something comes up let me know I can get some money.
Okay hope you hope you don't ever need it thank you.
Okay.
I'll shut seven ten now.